All right, let's call the joint City Council and Housing Authority meeting to order at 3:12 PM. May we have roll call, please, for City Council?
Councilmember Asadurian.
Here.
Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian. And Mayor Kasakian.
Here.
And roll call for the Housing Authority, please. Authority member Argian.
Here.
Asadurian.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian. Perazian.
Here.
And Chair Brotman.
Here.
Thank you. May we have your report, please?
Agenda for the Tuesday, November 15, 2022, Joint Public Meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority was posted on Tuesday, November 8, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Right, Mr. City Manager, we have a number of items before us. Let's have the first, is it okay if we, we're going to take these one at a time, correct? Okay, so let's have the first item read into the record, Mr. Clerk.
Community development regarding authorization of permanent local housing allocation, application, and adoption of PLHA Plan, a council resolution authorizing the application and adopting the PLHA Plan for the permanent local housing allocation program.
Great. Mr. Galanian.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Kasakian, members of City Council, Chair Brotman, members of the Housing Authority. We need to apply for this PLHA funding and submit an application and a plan for how we intend and plan on using these funds to create affordable housing, obviously under certain eligible activities. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Pam Jackson, our Housing Coordinator, to present to you the report and ask you for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Kasakian, Housing Authority Chair Brotman, members of the City Council and Housing Authority. I'm Pam Jackson, Housing Coordinator for the city, here to seek your approval to submit an application for the PLHA program and to adopt a five-year plan for use of PLHA funds. PLHA stands for Permanent Local Housing Allocation. A little bit of history on the PLHA program. It's the result of the Building Homes and Jobs Act, signed into California law under SB 2 in 2017 by then-Governor Jerry Brown. This bill established a $75 recording fee on real estate documents in order to increase the supply of affordable housing throughout the state. Okay. After 2019, 70% of the funds collected under SB 2 were to be directed to a dedicated revenue source for affordable housing, and that revenue is distributed to jurisdictions throughout the state through the PLHA program. Glendale is considered an entitlement city, so we don't have to compete for the funds. We expect to receive an ongoing yearly allocation. Okay. But we do, even though we don't have to compete for the funds, we do have to submit an application. We are estimated to receive $5.2 million over a five-year program period from 2019 to 2024. Our application must include a five-year plan for how we intend to use the funds, and in order to receive the funding, our housing element must be in compliance with the State of California Department of Community, Housing and Community Development, HCD, and our annual progress report on the housing element must also be submitted to HCD. And so there are several eligible activities that we can use these funds for. Our five-year plan intends to focus on the activities that you see here on the screen. So pre-development, development, acquisition, rehabilitation, and preservation of multifamily residential live-work housing, which will be set aside for extremely low, very low, low, and moderate-income households. Also, 5% of these funds can be used toward admin costs. Okay, and then, so our five-year plan states that we will use the first five years' worth of funding toward the acquisition and development of 426 Piedmont, which we intend to develop into a multifamily affordable housing for seniors. We requested public comment on our five-year plan, and we received one comment, and that comment was in support of the plan. So awards are expected to be announced in February of 2023, and with your approval today, we'll submit the application and the five-year plan to HCD by the deadline in order to receive the first three years' worth of funding next year, and that should be approximately $3.6 million. So with that, I'll take any questions.
All right, do any of my colleagues have questions, or anyone from the Housing Authority? Who would like to go first?
I have a question.
Please.
Ms. Jackson, thank you for the report, and I have a question. Looking at Appendix A, I see that there are some jurisdictions they didn't get the funding in 2019. Do you know based on what they did not get it?
Well, not every jurisdiction is entitled to the funds, so some have to compete for them. So that's one reason. Another reason could be that they did not apply for them. Again, that's a requirement. We're actually applying for 2019 all the way to 2024, so some may not have applied. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I have two questions, I think, and I'm sure you have all this covered. I just want to ask. So I know we're still wrapping up a few odds and ends on our housing element, and we don't have that finally signed off. That's not an issue?
It needs to be, so by the time awards are announced in February, our housing element needs to be in compliance. In order to, in order to receive at least, 2019 funding would be in jeopardy if we didn't have the housing element in place. But that would be it. The rest of the funding, you know, we'll have access to once the housing element is in compliance.
Okay, and we have every intention of having a compliant housing element by?
We're working on getting that done by the award.
The other question I had is there was a reference to live-work. Is that, because Piedmont doesn't have live-work, right? Piedmont is senior. Am I missing something?
No, so it does say live-work as one of the eligible activities. However, we've been working with a person from a local, from SCAMP, and so we know that senior housing is eligible activity under live, but live-work as well would be an activity that we could do.
Okay, that's just an, and not a requirement. Got it.
That's right.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes, after the expiration of the five-year plan after 2024, given that we will probably see what, probably enter a new application, the status for the entitlement, would that be compromised?
No, it's every five years, we have to resubmit a new plan. So this plan will cover us through 2024, and assuming the state's still collecting these funds every year, when that five-year timeframe expires, we'll have to come back to you for another plan for the next five years.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the report. Councilmember Brotman mentioned live-work. Does, is there any difference in the weight when the decision is made between low income and live-work? I mean, would we get more funding, or is that, does that weigh into the decision?
Again, we're not competing for the funds, so no, I mean, it really doesn't matter. It's how we decide to use them. If we were competing, then maybe, that would be a different conversation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have, we have the ability to select what we want to do with these funds as long as it's within an eligible activity.
Okay, great. Do you have any idea when that certification of our housing element is going to be coming along?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, members of the Housing Authority. So we are planning on bringing that back to City Council on December 6. Provided Council's adoption that evening, we will submit that to HCD, and we would expect to hear back from them by the time the award of this application is made.
Great, thank you. Good to know.
Thank you, Mr. Councilor. Any other comments? Okay. There is a council resolution before us.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Asadurian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian. And Mayor Kasakian.
Yes.
And I think we need a, do we need a resolution?
No.
For housing?
No. No. The next one.
Okay, next item, please.
Next item is number two, community development regarding affordable housing agreement and ground lease associated with Link Core Pioneer LP, created by Link Housing Corporation, National Community Renaissance of California, for the proposed 100% affordable senior and small-family housing project and Housing Authority-owned land at 515 Pioneer Drive. A is Housing Authority Resolution Improving an Affordable Housing Agreement and Ground Lease with Link Core Pioneer LP for Housing Authority-owned land at 515 Pioneer Drive in Glendale, California, 91203. B would be, C would be Council Resolution Appropriation in support of 515 Pioneer Drive, 100% affordable rental, senior and small-family housing project.
Mr. Galanian.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kasakian, members of City Council, Housing Authority Chair Brotman, members of the Housing Authority. We are extremely excited and happy to bring this item to you for your consideration. This would be the last step towards materializing the affordable housing project at 515 Pioneer Drive with 340 units for senior and small-family housing project. This is the largest that we have ever done, and we are anticipating that we go to construction in the next couple of months. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Fortney, our Senior Housing Project Manager, to provide this report to you and a couple of resolutions and appropriations that we need to take into account. Mr. Fortney.
Good afternoon, and good afternoon, Mayor Brotman, City Council, Chair Brotman.
Can I have your mic on? Oh, hello?
There you go.
I have to do all that again.
I swear. I don't think I've ever made a presentation where there wasn't something with the PowerPoint. Anyway, yeah, this is unbelievable. I mean, it's so exciting to bring this project to you. Just, we just brought you two other brand-new projects, and they're in construction. They're doing great. This project, like the city manager said, far and away the largest project we've ever undertaken. It's about two and a half times bigger than the last biggest project. So it's a 340-unit project. It's 100% affordable. It's for seniors and for small families. So that means upwards of five-member household. So there's 32 studios, 261 bedrooms, maybe I could put that on the... 45 two-bedroom units. There's three two-bedroom manager units, and 342 total parking spaces. And just talk a little bit about the, not on the slide, the product includes 38,000 square feet of open space, and that does not include the private open space, because each unit has balcony or patio. And I wanted to mention, it's got 4,500 square feet of community space. So I'll show you the rendering shortly. It's basically three buildings. There's two small-family buildings, and then there's a small, the senior building. And each of those has their own community spaces. In addition, I wanted to mention, there's 35 EV-ready stalls in the parking structure. It will be a lead-gold project, and there will be photovoltaic on the roof. I think you can see that on the rendering. And then the breakdown between seniors and families, it's 92 seniors and 245 family. So if you recall, we're building 167 seniors down on Broadway. So we're actually building more small family in this project. When Piedmont comes along, we'll probably be balanced between the number of senior units that we've built versus family. But I, but I will say, of the 245 small families, some seniors could occupy those also. We just won't know until we get the applications. And so there is the rendering of the project. I know we're not talking about design too much, but I know this is a newer project for our newer member, council member. So what we tried to do on the design is really step it down on Pioneer. So you see the two-story buildings, plenty of open space, and then two stories, and then we step it up to three, four behind those. So we did that intentionally. What you can't see on this rendering, and it's not included in the 38,000 square feet open space, there's a fire lane that'll be closed off that runs the span of the project. So we didn't count that as open space, but that's also there, too. And then, if you're not familiar with the site, there's a pedestrian tunnel that goes underneath the freeway, right next to the project. That leads you directly to Fremont Park, which is one of the, I think is one of the biggest parks. It's like just under eight acres. So we took that into account when we designed the project. And I did want to say, at this point, we don't have the details worked out on what we're going to do with the Kenilworth cul-de-sac. We can't, we're limited, because there is a private property owner that wants an outrageous amount of money for this worthless triangular piece of property. So we can't, we can't shut the cul-de-sac down. But we do want to make improvements to that cul-de-sac. We want to make improvements to the tunnel, the entrance to the tunnel, but it's going to take more coordination between public works and Caltrans in order to get that done. So we just don't have that done yet. Income limits. So this project is starting between 30% AMI and 80% AMI. It used to be, we were limited to 60% AMI, but those rules have changed. You can kind of ignore six and seven-person households, because the max is five on this project. It's there in case you want to know those numbers. But, you know, at a minimum, $25,000 for a single household would qualify for a 30% AMI project unit. I apologize. Upwards of $103,000 for a family of five, targeting one at the 80%. So that's the limits on income. Not unlike what we saw on the other two projects, in particular Citrus Crossing, although this has two-bedroom units, so you'll see that the rents are a little bit different. The net rent, that's gross rent minus the utility allowance, is $426. That's the least expensive studio. Most expensive studio is, would be $573 a month. And then you get, you know, you get up in the one-bedrooms, ranging from $609, that'd be the 30% AMI units, up to $1,726. And then the two-bedrooms range from $1,255 to a little over $2,050. So that's the unit mix and rents for the project. And source of funds, I don't know how much we want to, how detailed we want to get into this, but I did want to talk to you a little bit about this. It is a massive project. It's also a well-funded project, and I'm confident that it's going to get built. That first one you see, construction loan, the tax-exempt, those are the bonds. The, remember, this is a 4% deal. We went for 4% tax credits and bonds. So that number you see there, 82 million, that's the bonds. That carries an interest rate of 7.66%. We're used to seeing similar rates. Two years ago, about 5%. Sometimes as low as 4.5%. I've never seen interest rates like this before. That's what's driving the cost of this project. The taxable is a conventional loan. Bank of America is our lender. It's 7.91% on the interest on that one, so it's huge. And I was, I mentioned it in briefings, but I wanted to say it again here. Part of the reason why in this project, we typically will just go paripasue with the construction lender, and if not following me there, what happens after closing? We have weekly construction meetings, obviously, but we also have monthly pay-draw meetings. And that's where we get together with the architect, the general contractor, some of the subs, the owners, the developer, and we review what they are, what they're requesting in terms of reimbursements for costs that they've incurred during construction. We do that every month all the way through construction. And typically, what we do, if we have $20 million invested and the bank has a $40 million construction loan, they'll fund two bucks for every buck we fund. What we want to do on this project, make it pencil, is we want to fund our money down monthly, draw it down before we start drawing down the construction. It's both good and bad. It's a little risky to put your money in first, right? But at the same time, we were able to drive the contingency on the hard costs by $600,000 by doing that. So there's the benefit of having that higher contingency. And the fact that it pencils now. The general partner sort of, the credit sale loan, that's state tax credits. 4.4 million, that's 88 cents is what the price of those credits were, which isn't actually too bad. And then accrued deferred interest, Glendale Housing Authority Development Loan, you can see that twice, once for the land and once for our gap financing. All that really is, it's a source and a use. They cancel one another out. But we do it because it then drives up the basis for tax credit. It's an eligible, it's an eligible basis, so it's a way of getting more tax credits. And then another thing to point out, cost deferred till conversion is a pretty big number, 3.5 million. So that's costs that we don't have to pay during construction. And by the way, this slide is construction sources. I'll show you permanent sources in a bit. Point out another one, general partner developer fee. This 4.9 million, that's what the developer is contributing to the project. I like, my impulse is always to go after that developer fee and get it down. But in reality, you want that fee high, because that's also an eligible basis, and it brings up the tax credits. But there's ways to kind of get at that fee. In this case, they are contributing almost $5 million in fee, but they're also deferring, how much money? $7 million in fee, and that would be paid through residual receipts. The cash flow expected to be paid off by year 14 or so. So even though, you know, you want to get at, you're, just instinctively, you don't want to give a big developer fee, but in reality, you give it because it drives the eligible basis, and then you see how much of that you can get deferred through construction, through perm, or how much can be contributed to the project, and still make it pencil. So that's what we're doing here. And this is typical of how we do it. Another large number down at the bottom, limited partners, that's actually the federal tax credit equity. And then I just wanted to talk a little bit about, and I know I don't want to take up too much of your time. When we initially approved the letter of loan commitment, and I believe that was a year ago, the total development cost on this project was $143 million. When we brought the amended restated letter of loan commitment to you, it was $166 million. So now it's gone up another $2 million. Another benefit of that developer fee, they're on the hook. They're on the hook. Any cost overruns, they're on the hook, not up. And again, we do have the cost-sharing provision in the notes, so. And then I can switch over to perm. Okay, so again, the top number there, that's actual, a conventional perm loan. That's through CalCHA. Favorable interest rate is 6.23% when you compare it to the other ones. You see our money in, the state tax credit equity, that's the 12.3 million. We have a grand total of 28.4 million in the deal between land and cash. And then some of the same things that you've seen before. There's CalHFAs, I apologize, their MIP, Mixed Income Program. They're contributing $5 million, and then they initially pledged $5 million. They actually increased that by another $5.2 million to make the project work. And again, you see the capital contribution, the federal tax credits, that's limited to partners. I wanted to, I wanted to point out on this one, a couple of things that aren't on the slide. One, we're just under $500,000 per unit on this project. That might sound like a high number. It sounds like a high number to me. It's very reasonable, especially, especially given where we are right now with the cost of construction, which they're actually softening just a little bit, and the interest rate. The interest rate is what's killing us. I have seen projects in LA County, I think, on average, $650,000 to $700,000 a unit. I haven't looked at the numbers lately. It could be higher. We're still at $500,000 per unit on this, on this deal. Part of it, of course, economy of scale, but we're still doing good in terms of keeping the cost of this project down. And then I wanted to mention, too, if you compare the total development cost to the 28.4 million that we're putting in, we're leveraging $5.90 for every dollar we put in. In my, in my 15 years at Glendale, I think our average is $3.50 to $4. So we're getting a lot of money into this project, leveraging a lot for ours. Next slide. Okay, so just kind of, this is just the summary of the project. 340 units, 337 will be affordable, and then there's three managers' units, one in each of three buildings. We're targeting 30% to 80% area median income. The period will be 78 years for the ground lease. But the affordability period will equal that amount of time. So our per-unit subsidy on this project is $83,529. I believe that is the lowest per-unit subsidy of any project that we've built, at least in the last 15 years. The closest before that was Glendale Arts College, or we changed it to Ace 121, sorry. We were at $90,000 a unit on that one, but we didn't own the land. YMCA owns the land, so this is by far the best bang for the buck that we've gotten on the project. And then so, yes, the authority, the authorities assistance will be in the form of visitor receipts loans, secured by Leashhold deeds of trust. They'll be subordinate to a permanent financing loan. And then I talked once before about the not going in paripasue on this project and funding it with our dollars. Oh, sorry, keep up with the clicker. So fiscal impact, right now we have $4.6 million in low mod, $10.79 million in Measure S, and $1.3 million in tax allocation bonds, which is essentially low-mod funds also. What we need to do here is we need to bring in $2 million of home, $2.6 million in Measure S, and then back out to $4.6 million in low mod. So that's the resolutions of appropriation we're asking for. And then, probably didn't need to put in the slide, we did, we already studied CEQA at the letter of loan commitment, and we also did the entitlements. But these are the studies that were done, or part of the studies that were done. There was actually more. Okay, so the next steps, with an award, with approval of this AHA, within two weeks, we are expected to close on all our financing. So that's the lenders, the investors, everybody. And then December 12th is when we're going to commence construction. And that includes, or that's limited to lead and asbestos abatement. So you're not going to see any real activity on the exterior for a while. It's not until mid-February, I think, before we actually would start digging a hole. So the lead asbestos, I believe that's going to take six to eight weeks of work. And then you'll see the buildings come down, and then you'll see the site cleared. And then by mid to late February, you're going to start to see the whole being done. It's, the target date for completion of construction is December 2025. They've asked for three additional months in case there's snags that we were hitting. And then as every project, six months prior to the CFO, that's when we'll start the marketing lease-up of the project. And we expect 100% lease-up within 90 days of the CFO. And we expect 100% lease-up within 90 days of the CFO. And then the alternatives would be, of course, to adopt the resolution, basically staff's Or elect not to approve the AHA or the ground lease, and then third, make any decision that you want, that, that staff has considered. And with that, I just, I just would want to say, we do have members of Link Housing, National Corps, and our outside council, KBB, here to answer any questions that I'm, I'm not capable of answering. So with all that, I leave it.
Thank you, Mr. Fortney. Who has questions from staff? Yes?
I have one question. You mentioned that there are 245 family units.
Yes.
How big of a family, I mean, there are only four, 45 two-bedroom units, and that's what I would consider a family unit.
Yeah.
When you say 245 units for families, are you just talking one or two people?
So the one bedrooms can, you can house up to three people. So when I, when I use the term small family, I'm, it's not my term, it's, it's a tax credit term. So, but, but the limits in terms of the size of the household, you can have two people per bedroom plus one. So in a one bedroom, you can have a household of three. So here, these small families are small families between three and five persons.
Wow, okay. And how, how large are the two bedrooms? I mean, the one, the one bedrooms are how big?
Oh.
Square foot each?
Okay, so 530 square feet, one bedrooms, and 720 square feet, two bedrooms.
And my other question was going to be about the Kennerworth cul-de-sac. So I don't have any other, that's my question. I was concerned about the size of, for families, you know, saying 245 family units and there are only 45 two bedrooms. That kind of struck me. I thought that we would have more maybe two-bedroom for families.
I see, yeah. And before either, there isn't anything we can do to change that unit mix now. I will tell you, there, even though there's 92 designated senior units, I know that there's most likely going to be seniors that are going to be occupying the one bedrooms also. It just depends on who's, who comes in and makes the application.
And are there any plans for, maybe on the lower units, for disabled, family with a disabled member?
Yeah, you know, I failed to mention, we do have, I believe, it's, we do have some designated for developmentally disabled.
Oh, great.
We do have that. And I apologize to you, I forgot the number, I think it's 12?
Sound right?
Yeah, 12?
Yeah, 12. My apologies for not including that, but yes.
That's okay. Thank you, thanks. Great.
Go ahead, Councilmember Sadrian.
First and foremost, I'm really excited about this project and thank you for the thorough report. I don't know if it is part of the project, I just haven't heard it. I know you mentioned open space. Are there also plans for solar on this project?
Oh, if I didn't mention that, I apologize. Yes, there'll be photo of all taken.
So I, I saw that there, there is a unit price for utilities in your report.
Yes.
You know, there's new technologies out that allow for solar to be placed on like balconies and whatnot, those little panels that actually give utility to, to the units. And I'm not suggesting this for today, but it is something that I would be interested in us exploring for the future, especially when we're talking about affordable, as we're building affordable housing, for us to see how we can also take on placing those solars on their units themselves to further help the individuals that are going to be occupying the space.
Okay. So solar, it's, it's, you're talking about small solar units that would fit on balconies?
I'm talking about solar that wouldn't just cover common areas, but also the units themselves in, in helping further help the low-income residents from utility bills.
Thank you, Mike, for this, and all the work on this is pretty amazing. Could you just walk through, again, the fiscal impact slide here? You're saying we're, we're putting in money for measure S and we're taking out money that... Run through that again, because I didn't catch all that.
Oh, I apologize if I went too quickly on that.
No, you didn't, but...
Yes, we, we are...
And maybe why? Why are we doing some of these things?
Right. And I'm, I'm wondering if this is something that we can discuss in closed session when we, when we give you an update on the, on the, the potential acquisitions. But we need, we need to pull 4.6 million of low mod out of, out of the project.
Okay, I, I don't remember this, we might have talked about this, I just didn't remember. So basically what we're doing is we're, we're having to allocate 2 million from measure S?
Yeah.
Is that, is that out of what? Out of funds that we have not earmarked?
We, it's funds that you have provided the authority for a new project. So it's not, it's not...
Oh, so this is not new, kind of a new appropriation out of measure S?
No.
This is just money that we have in measure S? Now, you're saying now we're going to actually fund it?
That's right.
Correct.
That's right.
Yeah, correct. Oh, okay. Okay, that was one thing. The other thing is, you mentioned CAL-CHA. What, what is their role? Because I only know of them through the, these workforce housing projects that we've done.
Oh, yeah, that's a different group. It sounds like...
Oh, it's a different group?
It's a different group. They, yeah, they, so they're, they're going to issue the bonds, CAL-CHA.
Okay.
Yeah, you're thinking...
I'm thinking...
There's CSDA?
Yeah, and then there's CAL-CHA.
CAL-CFA? Yeah, there, there's so many. What was the other workforce one? CSDA and CAL?
CAL-CHA.
Is it CAL-CHA?
Yeah, yeah.
The same group? It is the same group.
I don't know if it's the same group, it's the same name.
You're right. There's so many acronyms. I, I get confused.
But it's not the same entity.
You know what? I can swear by that. I'm going to go back and look. If they were the, is CAL-CHA? CAL-HFA, my apologies. Yeah, CAL-CHA is who you're thinking, CAL-HFA's.
Okay, I was wondering what, what they had to do with this.
I know, there's so many acronyms.
Okay. And I think we went over this, but this is, this is going to be an all-electric building?
Yes, this is going to be an all-electric building.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Ajinian.
Yes, good job in presentation, Mike. My question is basically on slide 11, which is noise impact analysis. I don't see on the rendition any kind of a wall erected. This is by the freeway. Is that something, what, can you explain me that?
There is, yeah, you can't see it in the rendering, but there is a, a wall along the freeway.
Yeah.
It, it does kind of...
Cut down the noise.
Yeah. So it doesn't run equally in height all the way across because there's that, that off-ramp?
Right.
But, but for a good portion of that project, yeah, there's, there's an existing wall.
Anyone else would like to comment on it? Questions? Well, I want to thank you for the presentation. I want to thank everyone for the hard work that they've put into bringing this very important project online. The size and scope of it will hopefully, I know that given the housing challenges we face, this may seem to many like a drop in the bucket, but in terms of Glendale and in comparison with our neighboring cities, and even cities further away who like to pound their chests over building affordable housing projects numbering in the 100-unit numbers are slightly above that, just north of that, this combined with the projects that we're also doing just down the street on Broadway are going to make a great impact, hopefully, in the next few years for those in greatest need. I also want to commend you and staff, as well as our partners in Lincoln National Corps for the commitment to having the developmentally disabled units. I think that, you know, sometimes in the past, we, we've, in our rush to bring as much affordable housing online as possible, have, have overlooked that need. And I want to thank my colleagues who have expressed support for that and have championed that. I know that in some of our projects that we've done recently, we've included especially, I think we even did in the senior housing project that was done on Sonora, if I'm not mistaken.
We did, yes.
Other than that, I, I'm very confident that this will be a great project, given the track record, given what we've already seen in the city. I'm a little disappointed that we weren't able to get that cul-de-sac closed off. I'm hoping that we come up with creative ways to make sure that the tunnel access to the Fremont Park area is safe, secure, that it does not become a problem spot. And I'm not going to lose hope completely that we won't be able to close off that cul-de-sac. I don't know how we can do it, but I'd like to see it done sometime in the future. I don't know what created an impasse with the person who had the irregular lot, the triangular lot or whatever it is. It's really too bad and unfortunate. If that gentleman or whoever, the person, the owner of that property is watching, please reconsider and do what's best for the city. So with that, we have, we have a couple of actions that are before us. We have one for the Housing Authority, a resolution, and then we have a City Council resolution.
I would love to make the, move the council resolution. This is a great project.
Okay, I think, should we start with the, should we start with the housing? Yeah, for housing, we need the ground lease and the affordable housing agreement. Would you like to move that item?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and?
Second?
Okay. So let's have a roll call on that first, please.
Authority member Ajinian?
Yes.
Sadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Perazian?
Yes.
And Chair Brotman?
Yes.
And now for the City Council Resolution, Councilmember Devine has moved it. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sadrian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Fortney. Good luck to you. May we have the next item read into the record, Mr. Ajinian?
I am three community services in parks regarding status of program planning for the fiscal year 2023 and 2024. CDBG, ESG, and home annual action plan. A council motion improving the fiscal year 2023, 2024 CDBG program priorities, a fiscal year 2023, 2024, propose CDBG, a funding allocation plan by funding category and issuance of an RFP to community agencies for CDBG and ESG public social services and to, and to community agencies for CDBG capital improvement project. And B would be Housing Authority motion improving fiscal year 2023, 2024 CDBG program priorities. A fiscal year 2023, 2024 proposed CDBG funding allocation plan by funding category and issuance of an RFP to community agencies for CDBG and ESG public social services and to community agencies for CDBG capital improvement projects.
All right, Mr. Galanian.
So Mayor Kasakian, members of the City Council, Chair Brotman, members of the Housing Authority, I'm just going to go directly to Maggie Cavarian, our senior community services supervisor, to present this item related to annual action plan for next fiscal year for these worthy and important programs.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Mayor Kasakian, members of the City Council, members of the Housing Authority, this is the time of the year where the CDBG, ESG, and home program starts the program planning process. Fall is where most of our program planning starts and where we determine program priorities for the upcoming year. We propose a CDBG funding allocation plan. And then this week, we will be issuing both a CDBG and an ESG, public service, public social services, RFP, as well as a capital improvement RFP for the CDBG program. We met on October 24th, 2022, that is a typo, it is not 2024, and with the Advisory Committee, where they recommended the program priorities for the coming year. And they base these findings on community input, survey, and data analysis. We also reviewed the funding allocation plan, and they reviewed and approved the RFP process and timeline for the coming year. The most important part of the program planning process has to do with citizen participation. And this particular year, our CDBG Advisory Committee was really diligent in wanting to have as many platforms as possible to get citizen input. And we had five different platforms that we used to get as much information from our residents as possible in how they wanted to see these funds be used in the future year. We also looked at census demographics, we looked at our five-year consolidated plan. And just to give you an overview of our five platforms, we had an in-person meeting. Now HUD requires us to have one in-person meeting in the fall. And we chose not only to do the one in-person community meeting, we did a virtual community meeting, we allowed for email comments, we allowed for telephone call-in, and then we also did an online community needs survey with 279 surveys that were completed and analyzed. We also partnered with Glendale Unified School District on this particular survey, so we can get as many parents involved as well as other residents that were living in Glendale. So the established program priorities for capital improvement in particular, these are just in alphabetical order, they're not in any order of ranking, are health centers, homeless day centers, indoor community centers, and senior centers, libraries, neighborhood improvement, outdoor parks and recreation facilities, and youth and childcare centers. These were important to our residents. And then for public social services, again, these are ranked in alphabetical order, employment services, homeless services, legal services, mental health, senior services, services for the disabled and youth services. And then we also included a sub-priority within the priority. And then for our upcoming year, we estimate our entitlement funding for those three programs. For the Community Development Block Program, we're estimating about $1.7 million that will be, that we will be receiving. And then for the ESG program, we're anticipating $160,000. And for the home program, we're anticipating $1.7 million, which also includes program So to break down the CDBG funding allocation plan, just in particular, again, we're looking at $1.7 million, which also includes $35,000 in returned and canceled program from fiscal year 21, 22. $340,000 of this money go to program administration. We are going to be RFPing out $255,000 in public social services. And then the capital improvement projects, that's what, $1.1 million, but the bulk of it, $740,000 will go to our community agencies. And then we have one pre-designated city project, the Fremont Park renovation project. We have set aside $400,000 to help fund that project. And then to give the council and the Housing Authority a timeline, we started in September with our CDBG virtual open house. We invite community agencies to this open house. We explain to them what CDBG is, how to apply for funding, basically a how-to of how to apply for grant funding. This week, we anticipate releasing our proposal for the RFP. And then in November, on November 30th, we anticipate having a technical assistance workshop with community agencies to give them even more background and more assistance on how to prepare a good proposal and submit that. And then the due date for our, our proposals are on December 29th at 5:00 PM. Then in winter, in January, staff begins to evaluate these proposals that have been submitted. We work pretty much the entire month in review, about 20 proposals. And then in February, we prepare these packets and send them on off to our CDBG Advisory Committee, where they also do a good analysis, and that's where their real work comes in, where they review those proposals. And then we meet right here in council chambers in March. And in March, the CDBG Advisory Committee interviews agencies, they deliberate, and then they make their funding recommendations. And then we come back to the City Council and Housing Authority in May and June, depending on what day we're, we'll be here, to make our final funding recommendations and then do our final action. For our Emergency Solutions Grant, this is a two-year grant, and so this is the year that the Emergency Solutions Grant will also be releasing an RFP for their homeless programs. They're issuing the RFP actually yesterday, and then they will also have a mandatory technical assistance workshop on November 28th. And then their due date for their RFP submission is December 14th. for their RFP submission is December fourteenth. So staff is requesting the City Council and Housing Authority approve the program priorities for twenty-three, twenty-four, the proposed funding allocation plan, and the issuance of a CDBG and ESG RFP for public social services, for community agencies, and an issuance of an RFP to community agencies for the capital improvement project. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Councilmember Devine?
I have one question. How does the three point six million compare with last year's allotment?
Um, Councilmember Devine, that's a very good question. It's actually quite flat this year. We have really no new changes. Um, for the Home program, they had a little bit of a, we're anticipating a slight increase, um, as we follow our federal, um, information that comes in from our National Community Development Association, they give us some information. For CDBG and ESG, it seems pretty flat, but for the Home program, we're anticipating a little bit more money. And again, just like Mr. Fortney had, um, presented, that money goes right to, uh, the pioneer project and these great projects that we have.
Thank you. Looks good. Thank you. Good work.
Um, who else? No?
Question? Just a technical question. Uh, since the, uh, the RFPs are, some little dates are in December, what is the actual certification date for this RFP? Like, who gets the award at what time? When, when?
So the award is actually on July first, twenty-twenty-three. Um, when we come back to the City Council and Housing Authority in May or June, um, if they approve the final, um, allocation, the final, um, action plan, we submit that to HUD, and on July first, we start our new programs.
All right, any other questions or comments? Thank you very, yes?
Just a comment to say thanks to staff and to, I know the CDBG Advisory Committee, I think we have our chair here, Mr. Garibian?
Chair and incoming chair, I believe.
Chair and incoming chair, oh, okay, or vice chair?
Vice chair.
Um, I know you work very hard, um, and and I guess it's just starting now, and you have a, a period now where you'll be reviewing lots of interesting proposals, making tough decisions, so appreciate the work that you do.
Indeed, thank you. Um, with that, we have a City Council motion improving the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four program priorities, and we also have the Housing Authority motion. May I have a motion for the council?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Asadurian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian? And Mayor Kasakian?
Yes.
And, uh, now, uh, we need a motion for the Housing Authority.
So moved.
Seconded.
And a roll call, please?
Authority member Aginian?
Yes.
Asadurian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Perazian?
Yes.
And Chair Brotman?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Um, we do not have any callers on any of these items, which is why I didn't stop to ask for callers, um, and we didn't have any cards submitted, so I don't want anyone to accuse us that we denied anyone the ability to, um, give their input, but thank you, and with that, we just need a motion to adjourn the City Council meeting and the Housing Authority meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion for, uh, City Council?
Move to adjourn council?
A second.
And for Housing Authority?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned at four oh five P M. Thank you to our authority members, uh, Perazian and Aginian, and with that, we'll wait for the screen to change over, and, all right, it already has, so let's have a roll call for City Council.
Councilmember Asadurian?
Here.
Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Najarian? And Mayor Kasakian?
Here. Uh, may you, can you please read the closed session items into the record?
One A, Public Employment Attorney, Attorneys. One B, Public Employee Appointment, Chief of Police. One C, Public Employee Appointment, Assistant City Manager. One D, Conference with Legal Counsel, Pending Litigation, Glen Oaks Canyon Homeowners Association versus City of Glendale, L A S C, Case Number Two-Two STCP Zero-Zero-One-One. E, Conference with Legal Counsel, Pending Litigation, Claim of Horace Mann Insurance, Claim Number Two-Two-Dash-Zero-One-Zero-Nine.
All right, and, uh, do we anticipate reporting out on any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, anticipate reporting out on items one A, C, and E.
One A, C, and E, all right. Um, with that, we'll recess to closed session. Thank you.